All right, we've got all the meeting to order. We're gonna start off, well, start off with bills and manifests which Ruth is reviewing. We'll get those going around. Roll call, Keith Mowery in here, Shane Wells.
Yep.
Amy Hindman.
Here.
Brian Winslow.
Here.
David Ruth.
Yes.
And then we'll introduce the rest of the panel.
Suzanne Bochane, board secretary.
Scott Running, assistant superintendent.
Jocelyn Yang, principal.
Cat Brown, curriculum director.
Thank you. First up for agenda adjustments, we did have a food service presentation scheduled for seven o'clock today. I've since heard that the presenter wouldn't be able to make it, she fell ill. So, we're going to reschedule that for a later time. You know.
As soon as we determine D2.
Yep.
We'll schedule it for that time.
I don't think we have any need for a non-public session to start the meeting.
Correct.
Is that correct? All right, so we will start with opening public comment. Anybody from the public like to comment at this time? No, no. No, all right, any board members like to take this opportunity to address the board? We will close the public comment period at this time then and move to our school board business. So first up we have on here is our consent agenda. I think the idea was that we was gonna have in the packet our consent agenda and have a certain, like our minutes and other things in the agenda, but I don't see that in here. Do you have any idea?
I prepared information on the consent agenda.
Yes. You did. We got that at our last meeting and we decided we're gonna try to go forward with it and put, and maybe it's just up to us to decide for our next meeting what we want on the consent agenda versus in the regular agenda. We don't have them as separate documents.
Right.
I think we talked about doing it, but maybe we never sat down and actually said this is what we're gonna put in the consent agenda for next week. So maybe this is just a placeholder for that.
Can you explain what that fancy word means?
Consent agenda, okay, so the idea behind the consent agenda is that we would put a number of, kind of the pro forma things in a separate agenda and so it can all be approved in one go, right? So, maybe minutes, you know, acceptance of donations and things like that, stuff that's expected that we're gonna be like all just agreement and say, yeah, let's do it. So the idea is we'll have a separate agenda, put stuff in there and then when it comes up to, on the agenda, we'll just say, you know, approve the consent agenda.
Okay. You'd have a list of, if we had ten policies that we can, or a hundred pages of minutes for some reason, we could, yeah, that's fine.
And then, at any time before it's approved, if somebody wants to take something off the consent agenda, they can put it, move it to the regular agenda so that we can discuss it. So that's not something that's, you know, it doesn't, just being on there doesn't mean it's not gonna be discussed necessarily. If somebody wants to discuss it, we still can, but, I think the idea is just to save time on things that are obvious that the board's gonna agree. So maybe next time when we're looking at agendas, if we have candidates for what to put on the consent agenda, let's call that out and see if we can get that on for next time.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Why don't I, in July, even though you won't be here. Take your agenda and break it out into a sample consent.
Yep.
And then you can look at it. And we'll also put a, something on the agenda where you're, you have a mechanism to remove things from the consent agenda and place them on the regular agenda.
Yep, so that'd be great.
Okay.
Seeing nothing on there now, I think we'll just pass that and move on to our approval of minutes. So we have, I believe in our packet, we have non-public minutes starting on page four and ending on page four.
I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes on page four.
For May 17th.
For May 17th, yes.
Second?
Any discussion on these?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, one abstention. Four and one abstention. Then we have our public minutes for May 17th, starting on page five.
Motion to approve the minutes of the public session, May 17, 2018.
And I will second that.
A discussion or amendments to these agenda, I'm sorry, to these minutes. All right, all in favor of approving minutes as written?
Aye.
Four with four abstentions. All right, that's all of our minutes. We'll move to the assistant superintendent's report.
My report begins on page 13. At this point, I think we have one more annual review of COBRA Northwood Academy on Monday and we're done for the year. Parent involvement in special education survey was mailed out to families last month. The special education post-school outcome surveys is being prepared for distribution this month. Your cost of the SAU op program for last year was $20,310 for six students. You have one student who's going to receive a diploma next week. I talked to the family and they do not wish to have a ceremony, however, we within a cap and gown and diploma for pictures with the family. School safety training that I've talked about in a number of settings that we're gonna do at admin retreat is all scheduled for the 14th of August. We will have, Chief Dray will be joining us, or someone from Northwood, and I've reached out and left a message for the fire chief, but I haven't heard back yet. As part of that, we'll be looking at your EOPS, your emergency operation plans. We'll be doing some tabletop exercises to see if we can poke holes in those. We'll be spending a lot of time on unification. And then we'll get a training from the Division of Homeland Security Office of School readiness or safety readiness. We'll be talking about characteristics to look for in our population that might throw up some red flags. As part of my transition for July 1st, I've been performing the final interviews of your candidates. You have some wonderful candidates that'll come before you for nomination tonight. Very happy and impressed with their enthusiasm and incompetence. And below is your census marking any changes. On page 14, I'll explain this for the new board members and then Mr. Byrne will have to explain this moving forward. So, special education in the United States has a couple different sections of the American with Disabilities Education Act. Part A has to do with birth to age three. That's your local agency that takes care of that, the early supports and services. And once they're two and a half, there needs to be a referral made to the school district and that timeline's measured to see if we've met and have that IEP in place by the third birthday. You're 100% in compliance for this year for that indicator and that's, that's the news there. You only had one, so, but one's a hundred. Any questions about my report?
Thank you.
The next thing under my report is the solar update. I did talk to Jack Rutterman from Revision Energy. He was all set to come to a presentation. We had some phone calls back and forth, but when he looked at the Google map for the roof of the school, your roof is ballasted. That means that it's weighed down by rocks up top. And that is not an appropriate surface to put solar panels. So he called and said, you know, I'd be willing to work on arrays and properties and this and that. So we decided to hold off on the presentation because you can't really do much with your work and you would have to decide if you wanna take a look at a raise on your property. My suggestion, well, I have a couple ideas. If you're interested in solar, I think it would be a good idea to keep your eyes on what the town of Nottingham is doing. They've worked with Revision Energy and they've put a raise on their town buildings, but it actually produces too much power, so the school therefore gets a credit back on their bill. Now, I think we should wait a year and watch what that credit looks like to see if that's a discussion that you might wanna have with the selectmen, to see if there's any other town-owned property that might be able to support panels and, or land that you can put an array in. And then we can have Revision come back and give you, basically they do three different funding structures. One is purchased, I forget the exact name, but you enter a purchase power agreement and then buy it at the end of five years, or you can buy it outright, or you can let them use your property and you're gonna reduce fee for your power. But I think it'd be a good idea for Northwood to keep your eye on the Nottingham experience over the next year and see potentially what their savings are, just 'cause yours could potentially be the same and then have a discussion as a community about that.
A question about the roof. We have a flat roof.
You have a flat roof, yep.
What do they mean, they wanna roof?
No, they'll take a flat roof, but your, a good portion of your roof is ballasted with rocks.
This section probably in the front has got the rubber roof, the flat roof, and then the rest, the old, everything around this.
Right, so there's not enough of the rubber roof to mount the arrays to and they can't mount it to the ballast.
What do you call them, the arrays?
The solar arrays, the panels.
Oh, okay.
So, they can't mount those to a ballasted roof. So, to have them come for a presentation would've been sort of fruitless. And you can see, if you look at Google Maps, you can see the portion of your roof of your school that is covered in stone.
So in other words, they could put them on, a section that's a rubber roof that did have stone on originally and it'll get it all cleaned off and then we put a underlayment of insulation and we put the rubber over that, so.
If it's feasible to unballast your roof, I mean, that's a conversation for your facilities committee.
So we need almost an engineer to take a look.
Yeah.
In other words, if we found an area, we could scrape all the rocks off and redo a section of the roof.
If you can get enough of a raise.
That's possible. If an engineer said, yeah, you can do that.
Yeah, you wanna have enough arrays, you wanna have enough panels out there to make it feasible to generate your power.
Well, it's worth looking at because all this section here is a minimum of 15 years old. It's probably, half of it's probably even older.
No, I, but I met with Mr. Tom and you got about 25 years left on your roof, so if it was unballasted, you know, the other concern is the age of your roof. Your age of your roof is fine.
Okay, that's my question. I thought it was like a minimum 15 years, what would be the lifespan.
He gave me a report that said 25, so.
That's good news.
Yeah. You hope, right?
Good and bad.
I've passed out copies of your strategic plan. They're back from the printers. I really wanna thank Ms. West and the work that she did.
Yeah, these look great.
They look good. So the plan is, is we will distribute one of those to every teacher in the building, in the buildings. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to send copies to your budget committee members. And if you have anybody else that you would like to have a copy of the plan or any place that you'd like, or any place that you would like them distributed, just let us know.
Should we compile them at the town clerk's office? Do we have the town reports? Just have that, put some in there, people can pick them up.
This is the first thing I thought of, possibly also the Chesley Memorial Library.
Library, yep. We have 500 copies.
There'll be 400 left after I distribute it to staff.
Right, right. So I mean, I wouldn't put them all there, but.
No, we wanna save, we wanna save some, but we could at least drop 50 and 50 or 100, you know, whatever. We can take care of that.
Cool.
All right. Anywhere else we can think to put these?
Town hall?
Community center.
I was saying at the town clerk's office down with the, you know, they have the town reports and stuff when people go into.
Well, you got two actually, up and downstairs.
That's true, we could put some upstairs too.
Community center.
People are there like every day.
Few, yeah.
I was trying to think of public places.
Bo Brown? Be good to send him a few so they kinda have an idea what we're doing too, but I know you, we work pretty closely with them.
That's true, yeah. At least, any restoration there?
Yeah.
Dave, a copy?
Those are nice.
Dave Ruth.
Don't promote me to meet, eh?
Those are great. Amy did these?
I mean, yeah. She's got some talent. We'll let her know that. Would you like me to send her a letter?
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Please do.
Here, you can have this. You don't need to go in the line.
And then the only other thing, so the June 28th meeting, we have a.
Conflict.
I have, we don't necessarily, Jocelyn's away at a conference. She can come back, but the three of us are actually supposed to be on a boat at a retirement party for another superintendent at six. So, as I said to Keith, it's not like we can go late or else we'll just not be on the boat. Now, Dr. Gudowski has offered not to go. It's important for Jocelyn, we worked with the superintendent before and he helped plan the event, so. So the options are, is you can leave your meeting on June 28th as you like it and Dr. Gudowski will attend. You can, we could talk about moving it up to like four with like a hard stop date of like five, so give me an hour meeting. Or you can move it back to the 21st and we could do it at four and then be over for graduation or any other thing you might want. I mean, what we need to remember here is that week of the 21st, we don't have a lot of flexibility 'cause it's like graduation, graduation, two graduations, board meetings, so there's not a lot of wiggle room there. And of course, the 25th, the 25th, 26th and 27th, Dr. Gudowski and I are both away at a conference and then.
And I'm away the 26th.
And actually, Jocelyn's at a different conference in the same location that starts right when we leave, so.
I could do the 28th at four, I think.
The 20th or the 21st?
The 28th.
The 28th at four.
Instead of at 6:30. That's what we're talking about, right?
Right, and we just, yeah, and we just have to be really like.
Well, I mean, we could have the, right, we could have the meeting and just with the understanding that the administration's gotta leave at five o'clock, so anything that we need, we'll do first.
Where's the boat in the schedule?
Portsmouth.
At six.
Six.
That's rushing.
It's 38 minutes.
Yeah, sorry, I know. We've been all trying to get over that bridge at five o'clock.
It's the other way.
No.
The traffic's the other way.
I mean, I'm open to any, anything.
I mean, for us, the 21st might work because Jocelyn's still gonna have a hard time getting here on the 21st.
21st is fine, too.
And the 21st, she's gonna be pretty busy on the 21st.
I'm good, but I'm not that good that I can commit to a meeting at four o'clock on the day of graduation.
Right, right, but we can cover for you.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, we could do, if you did the 21st, then maybe Miss Young won't be here, but that's fine, you know? I don't know that we have anything.
I'll scurry by and wave as I'm frantically getting ready.
I could do whatever. Anything.
Whatever works best for.
I could do whatever day.
Well, it's really for everybody, I mean, whatever.
For everybody.
You wanna do four o'clock on the 21st?
Can you do the 21st?
I think I can.
There's nothing, there's nothing, the 21 would be 20, 19, 18, one of those Monday, Tuesday?
Well, 19 is a Wednesday, I mean, 20th is a Wednesday.
20th is a Wednesday, so that's Stratford graduation.
Right. Well, that's what I meant, the Tuesday, Monday of that week, if, I'm just trying to figure it out again.
I know, I think the 21st, and then we go to.
I can probably do it.
The Monday, we have a.
Right, you're here.
Yeah.
We're going to graduation.
Yeah.
We could do it before then, we could have four to six on Monday and then go to 24.
Isn't that, isn't there something going on earlier?
On the 18th?
Yeah, oh, that's right, there is, yes.
Here, by the way. Just so you know, that's been moved to here.
It's here, I didn't know that. Okay.
We could have it right after that.
Then after that.
That ends at 6:30, doesn't it?
After that, there's a board meeting.
Is that Monday?
Not yours, but joint.
Okay, yeah.
You'll get that this week.
Monday the 21st, doesn't that end around 6:30 or 7?
Monday the 18th?
The 18th, I'm sorry, that's, I'm saying 20.
That's okay.
Monday the 18th, we're having the.
Right, but you have a joint board meeting right after it.
Oh, right afterwards?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. So I think back to the 21st.
Graduation, we just walk over to.
I mean, the nice thing about the 21st is you're here for graduation.
Yeah, I can, I can do four on the 21st.
Four o'clock on the 21st?
Yep.
That works. Let's reschedule it for that then and get that posted.
Thank you.
Sure.
No problem. You always, big time.
Yeah. Mrs. Cushing from Barrett.
That means you'll still be here, right?
I will still be here.
That's double bonus.
What time's graduation, by the way?
6:30. And just double checking, we had, I think, canceled the first one in July, right? And then we're gonna, so the next meeting would be like the third week in July, is that what we're doing?
July 19th.
That was a suggestion.
Yeah, that was.
That's gonna be a dilemma. I'm gonna be on vacation on July 19th.
Summer's always.
Yeah, summer's always gonna be. But that's up to you guys. Because I won't be here for July.
Right.
So, I mean, we, maybe we don't, let's see, the, the meeting was originally scheduled for the 5th, right? July 5th and the 19th.
Yeah.
We canceled the one on the 5th. We still have the one scheduled on the 19th. But I won't be available, you won't be available on 19th.
Well, we canceled the 5th because we were gonna do the 28th.
Right, right.
So maybe we could go back to the 5th.
The problem.
I'm away and I'm away on the 5th.
That's like July 4th weekend.
How about the 12th?
The only problem, the 5th is on my vacation.
And so.
Yeah.
The 12th would be fine for me.
July 12th? You gonna be around?
Are you back on the 12th?
Not till 11 o'clock at night.
12th at 11 o'clock.
We can have a meeting. Well, give me an hour, I get here from Boston.
We could do, we could do that Friday, the 13th. Ooh, scary. I mean, just throwing stuff out.
I don't have a problem. But the 12th would be, we'd be more interested in the modules report, the business administrator's report at the end of the, if it's, it won't even be done probably on the 12th. The June 30th, June 30th ends our thing, our year, so that's always the last one, is an important one. So I don't know, even know if it'll be ready on the 12th.
Well, I think you've, I think historically, the last one is important for you because you're looking at.
Balance.
Spending, right? Yeah, well, have you already done that?
Yeah, we're pretty upset on that this year. We're not, we're not struggling at the end like we've done the past years.
So, and as far as, you know, your year ends, those aren't gonna be static until the end of July, beginning of August. You gotta close.
So what's the week after the 17th and in July?
26.
Which would make, I don't know, that would work and even would you have another one quick in August, I'm sure.
Well, you'd have one the week after.
We'd have one on the 2nd.
You're on vacation.
We'd have one on the 26th.
It's also my 40th birthday too, so definitely.
It's a quaddick, also, but you're a kid. When you get my age.
So, yeah, it's totally in your guys' hands because I'm not, I don't write any of these, so.
I have no plans this summer, how long is that?
I don't have a life, so I can make any meeting.
Yeah. I'm good.
All right, let's, I mean, you wanna find a July date on the 21st, and I'll go and, well, if you don't have any plans, but.
I mean, like, we'll just decide at the last second to go somewhere, so we'll work around.
So, what, what are we doing?
Trying to figure out when, when in July is.
Cause you, you're not gonna be here the 19th.
So you're gonna go all July.
So, and you're acting chair and I'm acting vice chair, so when in July do you wanna meet?
What would your preference be? Start there.
Well, we don't wanna do the 5th, we can't do the 12th, can't do the 19th, so 26th. And everybody just schedule your vacation from July 1st to the 26th. That'll be good.
Does that work for you guys?
Yep.
And if anything does come up, we can always.
Always call a meeting, yeah.
The 26th, yeah, there's nothing, unless you need, we can always call an emergency one for two, three of us to get in or something.
I hope to be done by June 21st.
Okay, so if you're not, we can come to you and ask permission to conditionally hire.
And then ask for.
Come to you.
Yep.
You, and ask for permission to conditionally hire and then cover that on the 26th, if we're...
Yeah, or you can.
And you can decide to do that or not, it just keeps things flowing.
Or you can just call a, call a meeting.
Or you can just call a special meeting.
Yeah, a special meeting for that.
Okay.
All right? All right?
All right, so, so to just summarize this discussion, July 5th remains canceled and we're moving July 19th to July 26th. Is that correct?
That is correct.
In addition, our previously scheduled June 28th is being moved to June 21st at four o'clock. With the understanding that administration will be leaving, oh no, you guys will be available then, more. Miss Young.
They'll be here for the graduation too, pretty much.
No, Dr. Gudowski will be here for your graduation, I'll be headed to Nottingham for seven, so we just.
So we'll, we'll just have to keep that in mind when we look at our agenda for, you know, our next meeting on the 21st to front load it with any, any questions we have for these guys.
Yep.
And maybe our principal report, report will be.
Well, we're asking.
Gudowski or something like that, or's in, in writing.
And we'll have your food service presentation rescheduled for that night.
For that night, okay. 21st?
Yeah.
So early.
And if the stars align and I am feeling ready, then I will be here, but we'll see.
You're gonna have more important things to do, I think, at this point. While we're talking about schedules, this isn't on our agenda, so my apologies, but we did talk about wanting to do exit interviews for some of the staff that are non-returning. And it might be easier to do that perhaps after school, like, and I get another four o'clock type thing, since they, they may be here anyway and obviously later in the school year, you know, near the, closer to the end of the contracts, might make more sense.
We were just gonna have that with the school board.
It's just gonna be the board and we'll have them, maybe, maybe we can schedule, you know, set a day and have, you know, 20-minute windows or something like that and have, see if people are available to come in. I have heard from at least four, I think, four or five, including maybe even Dr. Gudowski that would like to come in and talk to us, so I'm thinking maybe we should just pick I have heard from at least four, I think, four or five, including, uh, maybe even, uh, Dr. Gdodowski, um, that would like to come in and talk to us, so, um, I'm thinking maybe we should just pick a day or two days and see when people are available and we can post it as a meeting, and it'll just be a non-public meeting. As a certain, any day work for you guys all. In this case, we don't need to worry about you guys being here so much, so.
I'm available pretty much every day.
Well, what's the earliest you could be here after school?
Um, you're 4. I can get here by 4.
By 4, okay.
4 would work, good for me too, cause that's my, when I get out of work.
And when is the, the last day for staff?
Uh, June 25th for professional staff, the 22nd for support.
22nd for support staff?
Yeah. June 22nd, however, is a early release day, so people tend to skedaddle.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the last day of school, right?
Yeah.
So, um, maybe the Monday, the 25th, at 4 o'clock, we can see who can make it then, I can get in contact with them and, you know, set up.
Are you gonna be here?
Uh, maybe. It'll be tight, I, I may be able to make it to that, if not.
I think it's important that you're on here.
Go on without me.
Because they're kinda going through you to set it up.
Right, well, I could, I could hand that off to, to Mr. Wells as well. Uh, or we could do it earlier, I mean, we could try doing it before our next meeting too, we could do it on.
I'd say do it earlier, unless, unless there's a problem with the people who wanna come talk to us.
I would suggest doing it earlier, the 25th is a workshop day, and staff can leave at 2:25, and they have a really nice principal who might let them out a little early that day, so you might have better participation if it's not that day.
So what day are you thinking then? The week of the 18th at some point? Maybe the 19th?
I can do the 19th.
Tuesday?
Tuesday, 19th? So Tuesday, 19th from 4 till, I mean, 5:30, 6:00, or something, I wouldn't, any longer than that, I would imagine. We'll just, we'll just say 20 minutes and stick to it for each, for each one and.
Just have it right here, or in another room this morning?
Yeah, yeah, right here, I would think.
We'll post it, but we'll just say it's all, uh, non-public?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so let's post that.
Yep.
Um, and I'll get in contact with them and try to set up schedules, and I'll let you guys know if we end up canceling it, because no one can make it then, no, then no one can make it then, so. The other thing we could do is maybe do some of them on the, on the 21st. I know, um, Dr. Gdodowski said he'd be available then. Cause he'll be here, right?
All day.
He'll be here all day, so he, he may be able to do it. We can do that as part of our meeting perhaps, for, for a couple, or right after our meeting.
Just do him, I think the other group would be a bit of time, a different time.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, that, that sounds feasible. All right, that sound good to everyone then?
Sure.
All right. Do we have any other questions for our assistant superintendent? I do have one, if no one else does. Have you been following, um, I know, I'm asking just, I know you follow these things usually, the bills that have been being passed in the state?
Yeah, all, all season.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just had a question and.
Can't follow.
Oh, boy.
If you're not, if you're not familiar with this one, I, I totally understand, but the, I was just curious about the default budget one that they were talking about, that I believe got passed, it's gonna be waiting for the governor's signature. It was.
Yeah.
About making a detailed breakdown of the changes between the default budget and the budget from this year.
Yeah, I mean, I have to go look it up, but.
I just wondered if you.
There was so much activity, I mean, there was, it was.
You change your minds every day.
So as far as details, um.
Yeah.
If you go on to something else.
From my reading of it, it sounded like they were asking for, or what they're trying to do is what we've been doing anyway, with having a.
Right, to make sure that, right, to show the changes between the default and the regular, and to make sure the default's detailed out like the regular, which you do anyway.
Right, which we do anyway, yeah, I was just curious if.
But if you wanna go on to Jocelyn, you, since I'm the superintendent tonight too, if you wanna go on to your next administrator reports, when we get this superintendent report, I may have an answer.
Okay, cool. Sounds good to me.
So I'm not texting, I'm looking it up.
Anything else for him before we let, let him go? All right, then we'll move on to our principal's report then.
Good evening. Uh, my report begins on page 15. Adrian is not here tonight because he's off having fun in Washington DC with our 8th graders. More on that later. I am going to go out of order from my written report because I have a couple of staff members here who are supporting in the reporting, and we would like them to be able to go home. So first up is Julie Dweeren, she is a paraprofessional in the building and also the vice president of the, um, Support Staff Union. And she was aware that we have a mentoring program in place for incoming teachers, um, which has been very valuable and beneficial, but we don't have anything like that in place for paraprofessionals, and so she, um, after consulting with me and getting my approval, pursued a grant, um, and received that grant, so she is here to tell you a little bit more about what it is and how it would work, and we are hoping for board approval to accept the grant.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'm Julie, I'm Julie Dweeren, and I've been here for about six years, as a full-time employee, it's my sixth year. Before that, I was the crossing guard, I could, I played in traffic on Route 4, that was fun. So, yeah, I started off in the partner room and then moved on to, um, the general population, but still in the special education capacity as a para. And so I saw pares come and go, I saw them come in at the beginning of the year, I saw them come in when we're in full swing and schedules are flaring and all that kind of stuff, and it's very hard, our schedules are very packed. As pares, we're not here much longer after this, kids leave, and then there's lots of paperwork to do. So I did find myself even, having been in the partner room and then moving out, away from that, that room, um, just finding my place, you know, and having someone to help and guide me through, through the waters and things like that, and I've seen others, so. I know, as everyone probably knows here, that mentoring does ensure that paraprofessionals can effectively deal with growing complexity of their careers and meet the increasing demands placed on them, which I have seen over the years. Good demands, good things, making us, uh, we definitely feel much more part of the team here at Northwood as the years have gone by, and I, and I personally appreciate that, I know others do, we feel very valued here. So our goal is to, is to form a partnership between two people, a para, a para, a more seasoned para with a new, um, para, um, with a common goal of developing that mentees' personal and professional strengths through a strong, ongoing relationship. For us, um, I worked with Erv Richardson up at the National Education Association, and I did, I wrote and received a grant through the NEA Foundation, it ended up being a $5,000 grant, very exciting. We feel that for, for pares, I know the teachers are two years, we feel that one year is sufficient for pares to have that, that, um, building block, for them to be able to move forward and be successful. So with the one-year grant, we have budgeted for five mentors and five design team members. We do not have a para mentoring program. There is not a para mentoring program that we have been able to find. Erv and I have been talking about this for two years, and so there hasn't been one. There has been some things, materials that are coming to the surface as we're starting to develop, which is great, it'll help us, but we still are willing to tailor this to Northwood School. So I share this with colleagues, new colleagues, who are saying, "Sign me up, sign me up," and we're seasoned ones saying, "Oh, man, I wish I had that," you know? So we wanna get people up and, up and running. Um, I've shared that with ES, different, um, workshops that I've been to and with staff from other schools, and they're like, "Really? Wow, you're doing that? Can you share with us?" And, and I told them, I says, "I will share what I can share," and, and obviously through, with approval and stuff like that, but hopefully that we can make this, uh, the SAU, um, all the staff is, as welcomed and helped along the way as we possibly can. So the grant that we're, what we have established right now for our grant, um, is it covers, I'm just briefly, the initial training for our mentors, two professional learning workshops for the mentees, two follow-up professional learning workshops for mentors, because this is brand-new waters we're, we're treading here. And, um, so honorary for the design team members and for the mentors, to help to, um, just, you know, say thank you for your time and to give them some, um, a little something. We will be working closely with Jocelyn and Adrian and the building leadership team as well, which have been wonderful and supportive of this process. And, um, we also very much welcome your input from the SAU and from you as a school board. And, uh, I don't know if anyone has any questions, but thank you for letting me speak.
So, so you applied to the grant already?
I did apply for the grant.
And it got it.
It got approved.
Approved, okay. What are the details of, um, like, how much money and what's it, what's it, how's it broken down and stuff like that? And who, uh, who did you apply to?
It's the NEA Foundation. I already have some of my stuff together that I'm getting ready for it. So we do kinda have a, a, a little bit of a calendar that we have, just, just tentatively, or, um, to meet, draft, and review the program and what we wanna do with the program. We have gotten some materials that Erv has sent me, um, in addition to what I have here, that hopefully will guide us a little bit more along the way. We're gonna create a handbook, um, handout, we'll, we'll explain the program when we get it all tailored out, so you all see it. We have the training, which will be off-site, um, the NEA has a mentoring training program, so they will be training us, um, or the mentors, I don't know if I'm one of them or not, but the mentors. Will have an orientation for the new pares, and that will be connected by our new mentors. And regular mentor-ment team meetings, um, the professional learning workshops I mentioned for, um, the mentors and the mentees. It covers the design team, there's five, five of them at $250 each, the mentors at $500 each. And it, the total with what we have on here is $4,965. The total grant was $5,000. So, hopefully that will get us through our, it gets us through our first year, which is the biggest part of it, with the designing and all of that like that, and then I will probably be back to visit you moving forward. We're doing surveys initially, we will be doing evaluations at the end, um, because we wanna bring progress to you and how it's going throughout the process and at the end too, and if we can either tweak or whatever we used to.
The grants for one year, is there an intention that you would apply for a grant for year two and three, or is the intention that we would brand it into the school board, either through a contract or the school board could put $5,000 in their budget for mentoring?
I mean, certainly I would love for it to be adopted by the school board, um, cause, um, this is my first time writing a grant, but I would imagine my understanding would be that grants aren't always going to happen every year, and I'd hate to see the program, especially succeeding, being successful, for it to fall by the wayside and then to start from, um, square one.
Yeah.
My feeling is that, you know, if, if we have mentors that are, that have enjoyed the year, I don't know how the teacher program work has had, and I've had some discussion, um, as far as if, once you have mentors for your professional staff, if those mentors continue, or you automatically change them out. So those things we're gonna, we're gonna wanna play around with and, and see how that goes. We have some great staff here, um, I've already got a few names that I wanna mention to them, say, "Hmm, you interested?"
The reason I bring it up is because we are 18 months in advance of our budget, so that it's like a quick decision.
Hmm, I hear you. I understand, yeah.
Okay, by like October, so you don't have much time.
Okay.
That's what, if you feel that it's gonna be worth it, then you'd have to, if you wait, then it would be 36 months.
That's good to know, thank you. I would, then, I, yeah, I will propose that, I, I will propose that it, that hopefully, that it will be absorbed in our, in our school budget. That would be the ideal way for it to, to happen, so we can continue the program.
Any other questions on this? So, so you wrote the grant?
I did.
You did? I think, I think it's an awesome job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
It's a great program, I'm, I'm, thank you for looking into it.
Oh, you're very welcome.
You have to approve that?
Yeah.
So I motion to approve the up to $5,000, cause it was like, what, 4.9?
The, um.
To accept the grant.
Our budget, what we had detailed out was, was that, that we got, received a grant for $5,000.
Okay. Motion to accept the grant, uh, $5,000 for NEA, for, um, para support, mentorship.
Mentoring programs?
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Young, this is, is time in the, in the school year for them to go to these development classes, the mentoring stuff, or is it, would it be outside school time?
Um, it sounds like some of the workshops would be during school days, and so just like they use their professional days, and then, um, the meetings, since they would be paid, would be outside of their contractual day.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Nice job, Julie, thank you.
Yeah, it's gonna be great.
The second item I wanna bring up so that Steve can go home is Infinite Campus. We had, um, looked into adopting Infinite Campus for this coming 18, 19 school year. Steve has been working really hard, Adrian and I also attended a meeting. Um, it's not looking very promising, um, for a few reasons. One, the cost is significantly more than they had first quoted us. Um, it sounded like it was a few thousand dollars, a few thousand dollars more, it's more like 10 to 12,000 dollars more, so that's a big chunk of change. Another issue is training, it requires something like three full days of training for staff. But, there, there's just not that time, um, between now and August to do that with absolutely everybody. And then there's also a concern about initiative fatigue. We already have a lot going on and a lot of new things coming at us, um, in the fall, and to add one more thing to that may, um, not be advisable. So that is it in a nutshell, but Steve is here to answer any questions and provide more specifics.
Hi, here if needed. I can even elaborate a little if you want, but, uh, I don't wanna take up all night of your time. But I can quickly go into, uh, this was looked at as a progression or a upgrade maybe, or move forward and even alignment with Co-Brown, uh, for the Student Information System. Uh, Student Information System is basically the whole infrastructure, real-time database for all of your student information, uh, grades, uh, discipline health, whatever you might have attached to it, looking up student biography, stuff like that. Tapping into all of those pieces of information and doing things with them. Basically, it's on in the office all day long. We also have a web component that parents and students and teachers can use interactively back and forth. So it's a big part of our day, and, uh, we've had the current system for a while, we actually upgraded the current system last year as a, as a step forward to see how that would work. And there were some concerns over some of the functionality, and so we were looking at some other solutions. Infinite Campus seemed to be the right one for a few reasons, it's rated really well and Co-Brown uses it. So we went through a good, long process between myself visiting Co-Brown, getting some information from them, uh, talking to the vendor, talking to a few other schools, things like that. And, um, initially it looked like a really good fit, uh, for the amount of, uh, information that would be available and be able to, and basically the, uh, I don't have the right word for it, but the, uh, the ability to get information quickly and effectively was a little better than MMS's current solution. So, um, we, we looked pretty favorable, but unfortunately, as things went on, you start digging a little more, uh, the learning curve was a 9-degree turn, almost, and that's the way I look at it, and I was even warned bad at Co-Brown. That was their only real negative about the system, was that it was a, a good jump to change over. And the only other real issue involved right now anyway is, is cost. Uh, the initial, uh, the initial estimate would have been the annual cost plus 2, 3, 4 granted the most to get a new system online. They, for whatever reason, I'm not gonna get into my discussions with the company back and forth, but it was like, I was never able to get a hard estimate until not even three weeks ago, two weeks ago. So that was a little concerning, and, um, when I got it, it was one of those wow moments, uh, I was not expecting that, I voiced my concern to them about that. Tried to adjust it any way I could, maybe take some training time out, work around something to get it down to an area that we could deal with to make that jump to the new, next level that we were looking for. But they won't even budge on it, so it's not even, it's, we don't recommend that, we don't want you doing that, you're, you need to make this change over. Plus, the change would have been so traumatic for the summer, they just said we couldn't do it. So we would have to look at a change over during a quarter of the school year, and my initial reaction, that wasn't favorable, but I warmed up to it, if it was something that could be done effectively for both teachers, staff, parents, students and all that. But, um, again, it just, really in the end, it comes down to the cost, it's a lot of, uh, it's a lot of money, and, um, on a side note, um, I've been, I've been also evaluating the current system as we've gone through things, and, um, we've had some issues with support and a couple of things that have kind of, kind of dipped a little bit, which brought up these concerns, but now they're actually starting to take care of a lot of those issues. So they put a lot of work into their web portals now, I don't know if you, if your parents, if you've gone on, they've added a few features, so I don't know if they straightened those things out, uh, those little concerns we did have. I think there might be some chance that things will actually get a little better with that. Not that it's a bad system, I won't sit there and say, "Oh, MMS is not good," not that, it's just that they're starting to improve on their design. So, again, uh, sitting here now, it just, I don't think it's in the best interest of the Northwood School District to make a jump to this new SIS system at this time. It's just, I, I just don't think it's there for us right now. It's still gonna be something to be looking at, uh, obviously since Co-Brown does use it, we would always like to, to look at that as an option, but, um, again, it's a cost issue and basically, that's what, I hate to say that, but that's what it comes down to, it's a cost, the biggest thing is a cost issue. Sorry to be so, so much verbiage, but I wanna make sure I put the information out.
So, so that's just the $10,700, is that just the startup cost?
Yeah, actually, if you can get through the startup cost, actually the price per year is almost exactly the same.
Okay.
Pretty much, I, and I, and I really, I almost, I wanna say begged them on the phone, but I was really trying to get, can I do anything? Can we do anything? And they just said, "No," and I'm sure they have their reasons for that, but they said, "You're, you really need to do all this so that you have a, have a good flow into your new student information system." I'm like, "Okay."
And does that cost include all of, uh, the training that would be required and stuff?
Yes.
That's part of it.
Yeah. So it's, um, a little disheartening, but also, I guess, that I found some other information out, and there's some other things we can do with the new online system that we did get a year ago. So there still will be some improvements to the current system we have, uh, but we always are gonna keep looking at another solution anyway, just to make sure that we're staying on the, on the right edge of things.
So what you're recommending we do then is stay with the current system for now, like, when budget time comes in October, then make a decision whether or not we wanna budget for Infinite Campus for the 19, 20 year.
Yes, and that'll give me time and the people I work with, others involved to, over the summer, and, cause I won't get into a long story about that as well, but there's things happening this summer here that will kind of make us look at a couple of things. Um, so when budget time comes and I start forecasting numbers, um, and obviously there'll be a discussion with, uh, administration and then the board as far as the numbers work, if that's gonna be something feasible for us.
Do, do you still think that we're gonna be heading in that direction? And you still want to head in that direction, I guess I should say? Like, if, if money wasn't an issue?
Yeah, if, um, I think I might have put it out in the memo, I can't remember if I did, but, um, if you put them both side by side, as of today, in my opinion, uh, Infinite Campus is a, uh, more, uh, user-friendly, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the words tonight. You just, you can get more out of it quicker, and, uh, but the one downside to it, and I've, I've mentioned to them, is MMS is a lot easier to look at. This new system, if you ever have any children in Co-Brown or know anybody in Co-Brown, that, that's, it's like, I, maybe I'm turning into an old man, I don't know, but it's, it's, I mentioned that a couple of times to them, you really need to look at adjusting that somehow, cause it is a lot, they have so much information, that maybe it's almost too much? Not really, cause you always want the information there, but it's visibly a little difficult sometimes to work around, but I'm sure once you get familiar with it, it's fine. But side by side, sure, I, I have to admit that Infinite Campus is probably something I would like to have here, but, you know, that's, you know, money always comes down to it, so that's just the way things go.
Sounds like option two.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm telling, like, I'd propose that we, we go with that.
Okay.
We'll stick with MMS. In October, we'll revisit this.
I can probably give you a lot more information at that point too, what's happening.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Still have to stand up. I said you have to stay still.
I'm sure he was kidding.
Just to follow up on, on this though, that means we did have, what, $2,000 set aside for that, so that'll go back into our surplus for, works for me.
All right, I will try to go quickly through the rest of the report. It has been busy around here. Eighth graders left Wednesday morning, bright and early, 5:18 a.m. for DC. They got there around 3:30 yesterday, settled in, having a good time so far. I have heard that they're tired and there's a lot of walking, so hopefully they sleep well tonight. Recently, we also had a seventh and eighth grade curriculum night slash science fair. There was some great student work on display. We had fantastic parent and student turnout, so that was nice. And then on Tuesday night, we had the K through 2 curriculum night and America performance. I was not able to be here, but I heard from people who were here that it was fantastic. And it was, it was, I have been dibbling first graders earlier in the week and they were so excited, like they could not even really contain themselves about the big show that they had coming up on Tuesday. So, um, that was great.
There was a gazillion parents here for that too. It was great to see, this place was packed. It was, it was really nice.
Needing more chairs. Good. A few weeks ago, we had our kindergarten screening. We had 36 spots and we were pretty much filled. We had a couple no-shows, but we anticipate that they'll either show up at some point this spring or into the summer and then we'll also have some new friends who will come in. Mr. Alfred, Ms. Brown and I were around and available to provide information about the school and we gave parents a tour. And there were a lot of people who contributed to it, so appreciation to them for organizing it and participating it. And teachers have already compiled that assessment data so that we can create balanced heterogeneous classes. And then we've also identified some students who would benefit from coming to our summer program for either support with the academic and/or social transition to school. So, those invitations have been sent and some of them have already come back. Hiring update, you'll see nominations for a couple of classroom teacher positions a little later on and we are still in the process of identifying our finalists for library and nurse positions. I can skip the next two. Facilities update, the expansion tanks will be replaced and the boilers cleaned beginning on June 4th. It won't all be able to be done in one day, but that is when they will start. The front steps and the bubble gum steps will be repaired the last week of June. And the lockers, our guys will remove the existing lockers the last week of June and then the company will deliver and install the new lockers the week of July 9th. So, lots going on facilities-wise. Later in non-public, we can talk about the Andy Strout Award. We had a small committee who met at the end of May to look at developing a master schedule for next year. We were fortunate in that we did not have to make hugely significant changes. There were some grade levels whose change, whose schedules did not change at all. And it seems like it turns out that every year one grade level is sort of inconvenienced with weird interruptions in their blocks or whatever, so we did work to try to smooth that out and not have it be the same grade level multiple years in a row. So, we think we have a schedule that works, although we still have some logistical things to figure out, such as like special ed services and how we're gonna make sure that we have enough personnel for that. But that is definitely workable. So, um, we have offered it out to staff for review and feedback. We've received some feedback and people have already started talking and trying to work through any issues. So, we anticipate that we'll have that finalized by the June meeting and we'll be able to share that with you the next June meeting. And then important spring dates, what's coming up? The only thing that's really new on here is spring sports awards. I don't think I had in my last report, so that has been scheduled for June 12th at 6 o'clock. And a couple of things that are not in there, the artist in residence, James Chase, delivered and installed the eighth grade mural this morning. It is fantastic. If anybody wants to walk up there on your way out tonight, take a look. Mrs. Legasi had the kids already make him a thank you card and she's asking, will we take any pictures yet of it publicly? Because she wants the kids to be surprised when they come back on Monday and see it, but it's, it's really great and it was a fantastic experience to work with James. And then one other thing I wanted to share with you is the building leadership team contributed to the planning for the final faculty meeting of the year, which was this Monday. And we really wanted to end that faculty meeting on a positive note and so we brainstormed some ways to celebrate all of the accomplishments this year because despite the circumstances of our start, it actually really was a very successful year. And so, Lauren had suggested using an online platform called a Padlet to just give teachers the opportunity to sort of splash their ideas of what were accomplishments up on a screen for everybody to see. So, this is the hard copy of that. Please forgive any typos. So, you don't have to obviously read it word for word now, but I just think it's a, you know, a really nice testament to a successful year and, you know, we made the point that we would not have been able to accomplish all these things without a, a really dedicated and hardworking staff, so kudos to them. And that is all I have for you, until non-public.
Cassie, have you, have you made the agenda for graduation and everything already yet?
I'm working on it.
You're working on it?
Yes.
It's not set in stone yet?
No.
Facilities, I'm gonna be joining on the committee and I don't know, Tommy used to, I don't know if he could be updated on things that have gone on in this building, like we're doing an expansion tanks that were replaced. Maybe there's something, maybe we found out we replaced them two years ago and now we're doing them again. That's what I'm, I'm looking for, that information. He used to have a list of like, when the roof was done, like this one we know was done like 10 years ago. This was 15 years ago. So, he must have some chart or some list of the projects that have gone on. There was always problems in the kitchen with compressors and freezer and refrigerator, so. I know we had a lot of problems and it's like, we seem like five or six years ago, we did a lot of expense work on compressors and I seen some notes probably within the last year that maybe there was more work done on them. So, I guess if I'm gonna be on the committee, I'd like to know a little history and, and keep it so we don't feel like we're replacing the same thing. Sometimes you gotta buy a brand-new something or other instead of fixing it all the time. That's all.
Yeah, anytime we bring a new, the expansion tank was a lengthy discussion before you got here. I, I don't know if we want to go down that road again. But. But yes, generally anytime we bring something new to the board, we do try to provide the history and the rationale for why we're bringing it.
And that's just something, I guess for me, you don't need copies unless Shane needs something, but yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, back to the graduation. In the past, we've had a board member do a speech. Are you interested in that happening again?
I have it as a standing item on the agenda.
I am, I am not interested in that happening necessarily, but.
Totally agree.
I don't know, it's, it's a long enough process as it is, the graduation. I don't mind making it shorter, so. I don't know what people, if people think we should have a representative up there to talk, but if, if we have a choice and I don't get caught into like last year, I would say just skip it. We can just present the award, you know, and then call it a day.
But you don't want to make a speech?
No, not really. I'll do it. Last year, she trapped me into doing it because she, the agenda was already done by the time we asked. And printed or something like that, so I was trying to check it.
Trapped is a strong word.
So, yeah, if, uh, I'd, I'd be happy to get up there and, and present the award if people, if the board wants us to do that, but unless there's, anyone feels the need to hear someone talk, I'd skip it.
Alright, I will have Ms. Hilton strike it from the agenda.
Listen, you want to get up there and talk?
No, I'll probably be doing the detail for it, so.
So, if anybody does want to get up and have a, have a little time, I just favor a streamlined, streamlined graduation. Thank you.
Oh, it's a good time to maybe show this.
Right?
Pass them out.
It's, it's the eighth grade, it's people that are leaving.
Yeah.
Kindergarten register, maybe.
This is about the kids.
Not the kids, not these kids.
Well. That is true.
Any other questions, Building Principal?
I just have one question that's probably is a question more for Marjorie or for the board than, than you guys, but at one point, we were talking about using the capital reserve fund to, taking out money for that, for the lockers. And we never got around to actually doing that, I don't think. And I don't know if necessarily if we want to do that. That's, that's the other thing. So, so at the time that we were talking about getting the lockers replaced for, for your benefit, there was discussion, discussion about instead of taking it from the surplus to do it, which is I think how we, how we traditionally do these things, to, to withdraw money from our building capital reserve fund to make up some portion of that or the whole thing. It was like $15,000-ish or something along those lines, if I remember correctly.
The lockers?
The locker, maybe that's the lockers and the steps being repaired.
The lockers are like 22, steps are 9.
Okay, so 31. So, so there was discussion that we would take that money out of the capital reserve because that's what it's there for, you know? And then, um, you know, next year, we'd have a warrant article, start replenishing it or whatever. I don't think we actually made a final decision on how, how to fund this. I mean, it was coming out of surplus and then whenever, I don't recall ever voting to take stuff out of the capital reserve. And, and now think.
God, I don't know how to do it. How do we do it?
Yeah, yeah. That's maybe, that's what I say. This may be a, a question for Ms. Whitmore, but.
The answer to Shane's question, I believe, we have to have a public meeting to say that we want to withdraw and you've got to get the trustees and have a public meeting and say, we want to withdraw X amount of dollars out of this fund. The public's here, but then we can vote on it. The public really won't vote on it, but you, you gotta make it so that they, they even can say things.
I'm not sure, but I think that it, it depends on the type of fund. I think if it's an expendable trust fund.
We might have already been appointed as the people that can spend.
Right, right. So, I'm not sure we should look into that if that's what we want to do. However, my, my point when bringing this up is that, you know, we already have a, a sizable surplus being returned this year. So, you know, if we're gonna add to that surplus by taking out a reserve fund and then be asking for more money to be put into the reserve fund, that doesn't really make sense to me necessarily. I think perhaps, you know, in a year maybe where we didn't have a, a large surplus, it may make sense to.
If you have enough money in the surplus, you got, I can't remember the figure, but it's gotta be over 75 grand in there or more.
Surplus is, this year, it's, it's like.
You could get a 300.
For me, for me.
We could get three signs.
Yeah, it's like, I think all told, we have about $400,000. Source surplus is here.
In what?
Surplus.
In surplus, yes, but you were talking about the fund.
The fund, yeah, the fund has like, yeah, like you said, maybe 100,000 or something like that or.
Yeah.
Yeah. 75,000. No, maybe this is one of 30,000, I don't know exactly.
What are you saying, you want to take it out of the surplus?
Well, I'm just saying.
Or asking us to what you thought.
You got two choices, right?
We had discussed taking out capital reserve fund. I think if, if we do decide to do that, we probably have to do it before the end of the year. Right, so we'd have to have a decision by.
You, have you already got the, them purchased?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're doing it already, but the question is if we do want to take it out of the surplus, we probably have to decide that and, and get that moving now. Or we can decide not to take out the surplus, I mean, take it out of the reserve fund and, and do the spending out of the surplus the way it is now, in which case we don't need to do anything.
Well, I think you make a great point when you were talking earlier saying, we have a surplus and it's not like we're in a deficit and then we need something. That's what the capital reserve, I believe, is for, is when we're in a deficit or we really need. With a surplus, I mean, yeah, we're taking more money away from the town to give back, but if we take money out of the capital reserve, we're just gonna ask for that $27,000 to give for next year.
Right. I mean, I mean, one of our goals as a board is to, is to keep a closer eye on the tax rate and try to smooth things out and not have big jumps. And I think, um, so, so I think when we have a surplus, we should try to maintain it, you know, or whatever. If we have less of a surplus next year, then maybe we should try to put, you know, some of this money from the capital reserve into that. But I think where we are right now isn't a good place.
My understanding when we set up that fund for the, was an emergency or a semi-emergency, if we're partway through the year and all of a sudden we gotta fix something, we can't find 10,000, 20,000, $30,000, we have that trust fund that we can take. This is the surplus now and you've already purchased them, so it's still legal to take it out of surplus. In my history of the last 10 years, the selectmen don't, they put a lot of that surplus into their own surplus and they don't use a lot of it, they don't use all of it. I won't, I'll, I won't say, you know, not use all of what we return to fight, to bring the tax rate down.
I think we've got to look into that more because I, I'm not so sure of that.
I'm sure of it.
Talking to the, to the new town administrator, I think she has some, some ideas on how that works.
Yeah, I don't know how it's working, because the reason why I, I brought this up too before is that I heard that, oh, we can, we can use that money to pay roads. And they do that and they pay for, and they take the money and they take $70,000 to do Sherbin Hill Road or whatever. I've heard they've done that before. I don't know if they, if it's true or not, but it's someone's just talking out of the, you know, but I really like to know if when we give back $300,000, what does that do? Where does it go?
My, my understanding is that we don't give that money back. We just, it ends, it's in our bank account.
Yeah, it's there.
It's, it's there. We don't use it, it ends up in our bank account. We put it in our financial forms so that when the state goes to set the tax rate, the Department of Revenue sets the tax rate.
They subtract that total before they set the rate.
I mean, we don't actually write it.
They don't actually give money back.
We never write a check to the town.
But what I said, I said I'm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's what happened. I mean, it's, it only goes one place. It goes on the, it goes on the balance, it goes on your financials.
And the selectmen are in charge of it.
I'm not so sure of that.
Again, over the past, I love to look into it, but I, I fought while I was on the budget committee to find out how much in, out of the $500,000 over the last three or four years, they probably only used 175 versus, and it was like pulling teeth trying to get that information out of the selectmen. The money goes, the selectmen, we have a, a surplus of approximately 2% of our total budget that we can use. They have a surplus that can equal 17%. So, they take part of that money that we, our surplus and they put it in their surplus. And that's fine because if something happens in town, we need the money. But I, I don't want to say that we're returning all this money and it's gonna go right off the tax rate. It doesn't. Whatever they use, they pay, the state gets a, a part of that, the county gets part of that, the town gets part of that and the school gets a part of that. And I, I'd love to know what the percentage is on it, because.
At the joint board level, Sue was looking into that with the audit committee. I'm not sure if we ever got a report or, or some final things. Let's, let's offline look at that because it's definitely interesting.
I mean, if you want to vote tonight on it, I'd, I'd be more of a, picking out a surplus than.
Well, I started this, it was more of like, you know, if we wanted to get that money out of the capital reserve, we, we should do that now, I think. Sounded like maybe we don't want to do that at this point.
I don't, I don't think so. I think, uh, like Dave said, for emergencies.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm good with that too.
I mean, I feel comfortable, you guys have been talking about getting this equipment for the school and everything before I came on board. And if you want to take it out of the surplus or you want to take it out of a trust fund, you're taking the money from my pocket here and I'm taking it out and I'm putting it in this pocket. It's all the town's money. It's all the people who've been paying taxes, so we're not using anything extra. We, we've already paid it, so it makes sense for me to use it when I get surplus because it doesn't get used the way we really want it to.
Oh, yeah, the flip side of that, of course, is that, you know, it's like we have our savings account and we could dip into that and, and give some back to the town rather than holding on to it. In this case, I think, I think we are giving back enough money as it is. I don't know that we have to go take that extra step, but we could. Anyway, sorry to co-opt your report. Something like, to keep in mind, I guess.
So, do you want to make, do you want a motion out there to?
I think if.
I think if we're not planning on taking, withdrawing money from the capital reserve fund,
I don't think we need any motions.
Because we already, we already voted to, to fund the, the tank, whatever, the tank replacement expansion. Sorry. We already voted on that and it was discussed in public, I feel like.
Yeah. For times, yeah. So, I don't think we have to necessarily do anything. Any other questions for our principal?
Okay, thank you very much. Curriculum Director's Board.
Good evening. So, I've been working on updating the NAPLA curriculum documents and getting feedback from teachers to make sure that they are user-friendly and that teachers can use them to guide instruction next year. to guide instruction next year. I've been working with Ms. Young and Mr. Alfred to interview the candidates and I agree with Mr. Bruning and Ms. Young, the candidates that are coming before you are excellent and I'm very excited about what next year is going to look like. Teachers had an opportunity to learn more about the standards-based report card. They had the chance to look at the standards that they will be assessing and I think that teachers were, I think, maybe a little bit apprehensive, but there seems to be a level of comfort that I've been hearing about from, from teachers, so I think that went well. And I'm in the process of contacting other schools to learn more about how they handle the standards-based report card, how they would select a valedictorian, and what their sports eligibility policies would look like. So I'll be giving that information to Ms. Young. And again, I did participate in the kindergarten screening day. Wanted, and was particularly interested in making sure that parents were aware that and the curriculum director and that I would be involved with their kids. I wanted to make sure that they would be welcomed to the school. So I did that with Ms. Young and Mr. Alfred. I think that went well as well.
And I need to give Kat credit. She did the bulk of it. We had three sessions and ideally thought one of us could each take a session, so I did the first one to model for the three of them and then she did the second and Adrian was supposed to do the third. But it was a really busy day and kids were not behaving themselves and so kind of at the last minute he said, "Kat, can you do this for me?" So Kat actually took the lead on two of the three sessions, so we appreciate that.
Thanks. Do we have any questions? You follow?
Not for Kat, but I have a follow-up on the lockers. My brain don't work as fast as it used to like you young people. It takes me a minute to catch up.
Let's follow for, with her first and then we can talk lockers after. Are our numbers for kindergarten basically what we had predicted? Have they changed much?
We're in the mid-thirties right now. I do anticipate that we'll have another five to ten come in over the next couple of months.
Yep.
So do we have like specialized sessions for people that move in, to give them the same information and stuff?
We try to do the screening and, but it's kind of hit or miss depending on when they register and whether or not we can do that. If we can't do the full thing this summer, then we, we make sure to get that assessment piece in, in the fall. We don't really have the luxury of the time for the parent piece as much.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Well, we attended and we felt really good about Cameron going to kindergarten. The room is cute. I hadn't seen the new kindergarten room, so I'm excited.
Is it right in the same spot? Like right next to the other room?
Yeah.
Yeah, the technology room.
Yeah. It was nice.
All right. Any other questions for our technol-, our curriculum director?
No, it's good.
Thank you very much. Dave, would you like to ask questions about lockers?
Are we getting any salvage from all those lockers we're throwing out?
I need to check on that with Mr. Tom. Harding Metal is providing a dumpster for us to put them in and we'll come and take it away, which they don't typically do. So my guess is that that's even Steven, right there. But I will double check with Mr. Tom on that.
One other thing, too, is I know some of my guys at the department would love to ask for lockers in the apartment, so I don't know if that's something there. There wouldn't be many.
Step bar, step barbecue.
There'll be outside.
Well, I'd make a motion that we donate to any town group or civic group that could use a few lockers, sure.
Let me just make sure that they're, they are bolted pretty firmly to the wall, so I just want to make sure that we're not destroying them in the process of taking them off.
Okay.
So I'll check with Tom on that.
All right.
Who's taking them all down?
We are.
Jocelyn by herself.
I'll bring my sledgehammer for you, Jocelyn. I got a pink one.
Do I look like I would use a pink sledgehammer? No.
You don't know her well.
Whoa. That'd be the biggest one.
She might after a comment like that.
Right. He would.
Violence is never the answer.
All right. All right, we ready to move on to our policies?
Yeah, I have your Senate Bill 342 update if you want that first. Then we'll talk about policies. So, yeah, the Senate and House concurd and it's an enrolled bill, which means it should go into effect in sixty days.
Is it signed?
Not yet. So it does change the definition of the default budget. If you remember, the default budget used to talk about prior years, only one-time expenditures, but now it's going to contain salaries and benefits of positions that have been eliminated in the proposed budget. The bill also requires that on the default budget form, the increase in reductions to the prior year's budget include identification of specific items that constitute a change by account code and the reason for the change and requires the default budget be presented for questions and discussion at the first budget hearing, first delivered, I believe. And that's it for now. Of course, what will happen, just so you know, is the School Boards Association will provide information based on that once it's signed and we'll implement it from there.
It sounds like it's not much different than what we've been doing other than the positioning part.
I think the identifying the positions will be a new change and then the description. I mean, we've always had a discussion at the first session.
Right.
So I don't think it's going to change too much for you. Did that help?
Yep.
All right. So policies, I just looked through the policies. We're doing a great job of training and getting things together, but what I noticed in the first two policies is that the tracking information wasn't in there. So the changes that Mr. McGuigan and Ms. Young and I discussed are in there. I can see those. But the tracking information isn't. So I want to bring those first two back with those strike throughs in italics so you can see what the change was. So I'm going to table those first two. So if we-
Can I just ask clarification on that, on the first one?
Sure.
Maybe it's just that it's not struck out, but-
Right. That's what I'm saying, the tracking is the physical and health education will be part of the school.
Yeah.
Curriculum in grades K through eight is the change that we made, right?
This one, A.
Yeah, because it used to be once a, there used to be a time attached to it.
Uh, that's, that's in there somewhere else, I thought. Yeah, it holds a B, right? Students of all ability levels will participate in physical education classes each week. Because that was being, that's part of the part that was struck for it or change.
Right. So I have to go back through that and have those, that tracking put in there for you. It's not a huge deal, but it doesn't help you see any changes.
See what changes are, yeah.
So, so if we jump to BCB. I think we can do this one. Because if we turn to page twenty-nine, you see the note that says, "The policy is revived to incorporate the restrictions imposed by RSA ninety-five colon one. The policy recognized the potential of a conflict of interest involving the superintendent. This revision also adds a mechanism for addressing a conflict of interest between the superintendent and a prospective district employee." So I believe that's the only change. So I think we could probably go ahead and-
You're saying the, the note is the only change?
I believe it is on that one. If it is, then I can go back and check and have her put the strikers in if we took things out. I think we did a lot with that.
If we, if we move it to a second reading, if there's a strike through or something issued to review things. So, yeah, we need a motion to move it to second reading.
Yeah, well, I mean, I-
You can do that.
If it's the, I mean, the addition of a note on there doesn't really make sense-
Well, no, the note references what was changed in the policy.
Right. So this wouldn't be in place in the policy.
No, that comes out.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. So, so I don't see where the changes are in the policy.
Right. So we can retract those, too. It's totally fine. It's a training opportunity.
Okay. So we'll table this one.
Now, the next one should be pretty straightforward because it's all bills. It involves-
Okay.
So physical examinations of students?
So this is a second reading of this, so-
That's your second reading. I've already done your first reading.
Right. So we're looking to adopt this policy at this time. Anyone like to make a motion to adopt the policy, JLCA?
I will. I make a motion to adopt the policy, JLCA, as presented.
Okay.
Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor of adopting the policy as written?
Aye.
There is five zero.
So, Mr. Ruth, just to help you, in the policies we reviewed tonight, when you asked the question about the physical examination of students-
Yep.
In this policy, it references the yearly physical exam for athletics. So, all right.
I'm up for policies.
Yeah, other than the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight we did tonight, that'll come to you.
Oh, you, you-
We met the policy committee at tonight.
Does anybody mind if Kat goes home?
No.
Okay.
Babysitting issues. Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're all voted-
Shane does. Shane wants everybody to stay tonight.
Shane's like, "If I have to be here, everyone has to be." Okay, so when I have eight, nine, ten, eleven policies at the next meeting?
I think we'll split, though.
Fun, guys.
Well, I mean-
Oh, no, I'll be here for that one.
You will.
Yeah, yeah. Put them all, put them all on the next meeting, yeah.
Well, that's, that's our, that's our time of press meeting, too.
Oh, yeah, that's for sure. Is that the twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Four o'clock.
Yeah, so we may want to-
Dr. Kadomski will be here. We'll, um- No, we won't. I'll split. I'll split them up. I'll cover that meeting, too. Meanwhile, Jocelyn will be working on the agenda.
Yeah, Jocelyn's like, "I gotta go."
All right. Superintendent's report.
Personnel reports on page thirty-two. This is the most exciting part of my night.
Can I just say, though, I love the fact that we changed our CVA, that we can hire on different parts of the scale. I'm sure that's probably one of, you get better candidates, you know?
Right, that might be helping here, yeah.
You know, that's, that's, so.
Yeah, that's true.
So she's coming in and-
I'm not saying a brand-new person would be a great teacher, it's just that-
Experience can't always have all the breadth.
That there was a condition that you could only hire somebody up to some certain step. It's my assumption. When did that change?
This year.
This year.
This year.
It was changed as part of the contract negotiations with teachers and the paraprofessionals.
Good, yeah.
But what did we start negotiations for?
That's the share for it.
For paraprofessionals, it's this year.
What's the timeframe on that?
Well, they have to give us a letter in-
Right. February, May?
No, no, no. We'll get a letter in August or July, August or September.
Yeah, because we got to do it for this year's budget.
Have you defined who's on your committee?
Yeah, it's me and Amy, I believe.
Is it? Am I, oh, for the para?
Keep your head off.
Am I on the teachers or the paras?
You might be on the teachers.
I think he's on the teachers.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you'll have an administrator, either me, Nate, or your new BA.
Yep.
You ready?
Yep.
So I'll nominate Kelly Garcia as an elementary teacher for salary of fifty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is a master's degree, step eleven.
Move to elect Kelly Garcia.
Point of order. Is the superintendent allowed to make a motion for the school board?
He's not, he's not making a motion. He's nominated.
I nominated.
You nominate him, then we have to have a motion. You're making a motion.
I'm making a motion to elect.
Thank you. Then somebody else second-year motion. Somebody already do-
You, you got it.
A discussion on this. All in favor? Aye.
I'll nominate Amanda Walchuck as an elementary teacher, salary of forty-three thousand zero fifty-two. I want to look at something. This is B thirty-five, step four.
I'll make a motion to elect Amanda Walchuck for elementary school teacher.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for our knowledge and maybe the publics, when we hire an elementary teacher, that's somebody who's capable of teaching grade one through eight or four or five or-
It depends on their certifications.
In this case, you've got K through eight certifications.
It's not all certifications are K through eight, though. It's K through five.
There's K through three. There's K through six.
There's K through six.
Six through twelve.
So if we are hiring somebody that, for a certain position, then it would say that on the-
Says it on the intent to hire.
Yeah. It says it's replacing.
Says K through eight, gives the certification number and then what grade they'll be teaching.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Here's five zero.
I'll nominate Jennifer Hodgson as a one-to-one paraprofessional for the class trip. They're currently on.
So she's actually working for free right now.
She's going to come back and was like-
Sometimes the timelines just don't light up.
I'll make a motion to elect Jennifer Hodgson as a paraprofessional for class trip.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. So we could prank her and like send her a text saying, "Hey, you did not approve them all."
She cares about that.
She's not very nice. We're scared of her.
Our stipends are informational.
Stipends are informational, Northwood, although we have approved coaches before, so I'm not sure what-
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Everything that you have is public knowledge, right?
No, no, it's public knowledge, but some require action and some don't.
Right. Traditionally, our stipends have been informational only for the board, so that would-
So Peter Higas is your boys' soccer coach for a stipend of thirteen hundred dollars. Mark Blad is your girls' soccer coach for a stipend in thirteen hundred dollars. Amy Chazak is your cross-country coach for a stipend of thirteen hundred dollars. Then on page thirty-three.
Question?
Yep.
For cross-country, there's boys and girls, so we're going to have one coach for both?
No, we'll have one more nomination at the next meeting.
Then if you turn to page thirty-three, you have a retirement, Mary Gang, title one. Do a nomination to accept the retirement.
These were actually done on May seventeenth.
All done?
They're duplicates, yeah. Yeah.
Then we won't do those again.
Well, we didn't. Did we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yeah.
Makes a lot of sense. Yeah, I just wanted to double-check. That's it for me.
Any questions for acting and seem-to-be superintendent?
I just wanna reiterate, I think Kat said it, and I've said it, and Jocelyn is... They sent me some excellent candidates to interview. And it's very exciting.
That's it. All right, so no new business on our agenda. We'll move to committee reports. Does anybody have any committee meetings? It's our last meeting. The technology committee meeting, that may have been before our last meeting. I'll report on that.
We had a meeting for policies that you've already been telling them.
Yep, okay. Anything else interesting happen in between?
No, just Dave, we should probably, um, probably do a facilities meeting before the end of the year.
Whenever, yeah.
Yeah, maybe before the June twenty-first meeting.
Sure.
My schedule's all over the place, so I'll get with you.
Yeah, yeah. I'm pretty much flexible.
Okay.
Plus, I get a babysitting job. Got a new granddaughter.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations on that. All right, on our old business, we have our board goals review. I don't think we have our goals in our packet. I think next time we do this, we're trying to get those packets so we can go over them. Somebody has a copy of them.
I have a copy.
Yeah, all right, if you wanna lead us through our goals, just to see where we are on them and what we talked about then?
Goal: Establish and maintain staff and administrative consistency. Concrete ideas: Examine exit interview data, evaluate salary schedule, compare it to other communities, establish informal dialogue time. Listening session with staff, sign. Sign on. It's typed on, I think. To your contracts for building administration.
We've checked about a lot of those. The one thing is, we haven't been doing our listening sessions, if that's something that people... Maybe that's something we can think about over the summer and then start next year in the fall.
Yes, I think the fall's a good time to start that initiative like that.
Yeah, yeah. Is that everything?
That was for the first, yep. Uh, the goal, second goal, ensure educational success of students. Concrete ideas: Establish a rubric to measure student engagement and staff culture. Encourage staff and administration to creatively experiment and explore diverse or localized approaches to improving student outcomes. Establish and execute a schedule for reviewing core curricula, and evaluate the current system of professional development and identify areas for improvement.
Have any ideas or comments on that? There's some that we're doing. Curriculum review, we're making some progress on, right?
Yeah, so we established that schedule of reviewing different content areas.
I think this summer, we probably wanna start taking a look into the student engagement rubric. How we're gonna, how we're gonna go about that, because that, I think, is kind of the top of the list of actionable items.
Yeah.
Just throwing that out there.
Okay.
It's something I wanna focus on, I guess.
If you have any ideas, maybe we can put them on our agenda for the August, first-July meeting, or, yeah, second-July meeting, or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Improve communication with the community. Concrete ideas are regularly write and distribute a board newsletter. I have something to show you.
Oh, cool.
It's not done, but it's starting.
Better than I've...
Yeah.
About two years we've been saying.
Where did I go here? Yeah. Schedule town hall-style listening sessions for the community to discuss issues with the board. And support the revamp of the competency-based report cards. Develop a policy that defines and facilitates community access to school facilities.
So do you wanna share that newsletter with us now, or do you wanna...
Oh, if you want. I mean, it's, so, based on the content of the last meeting, I feel like months, like maybe May and June, or when things are slow, we could do a monthly, because it's kind of... I also wanna kind of develop, I was kind of maybe looking for input from you guys about... I know that there's the highlights, but it's something more exciting. I don't know how to put excitement into it.
That's always been my problem, too.
Things you've learned, or things we've learned, things we've learned. I know, like, Jell-O, Russell. Things we've learned, um, because I feel like I learn things all the time from the administration and things like that, and then ways to communicate our thoughts, so maybe getting a little input from you guys, too, in the newsletter, like, things that caught your attention that we would wanna convey to the public. Because I don't just wanna give what...
For that, like, now, like...
Um, maybe, like, I might send something out and ask for maybe your highlight, or like, something that you thought about within the last month worth of meetings. And then I could kind of compile that, just to kind of get a perspective from everybody, just to kind of make it more personal.
Yeah, well, the way I always thought it should be is, like, you're explaining to the community what the school board does, and what we're about, and like, kind of like, did you know that the reason why the budget or the default budget is like this?
Yeah, sure, sure.
And this is our default budget, and why we're doing things, why we're doing things, so people know. But also, it's like, uh, kind of like, it should be like, uh, do you know, kind of, thing for the people? Because they don't know what we do.
Right.
I didn't know what I was doing until I got here.
And I, and I don't wanna do it in, like, a boring way. I wanna kind of point people in the right direction, and I wanna highlight the information that we've learned, but I don't wanna just regurgitate Becky Rule's forum article.
Yeah, yeah, and, or the minutes.
Or the superintendent's newsletter.
Right, or the minute, right. It's hard to kind of, I just wanna pick out the highlights and also be able to make things... This is just based on the last meeting, but I was like, I need more than just what came from the last meeting to make a newsletter, because it's just not...
Well, I think we're, I think we're, it's gonna be, not like a full news, not like a full letter, but I think it's just gonna be a section that's gonna go out in the Laker and potentially could go into the Sun. So I don't think you have to worry about it being, you know, real extensive.
Right, especially if it's gonna go into the Sun, you know, it's a three-hundred-word limit there, so...
Maybe I'm overshooting my, I just like...
I think this is cool, though. I think this is really cool. I think this would be, uh...
I didn't know, like, what, yeah, I guess. I just tend to dive into things. And I'm like, it's gonna look dumb if I just have, like, a paragraph, you know?
Well, I think, I think the idea is, though, is if we have a paragraph in every, every two weeks in the Sun, or in every month, the Sun, and every, and in the Laker. You know, that's regularly scheduled thing.
That's true.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought.
Okay.
But I really like the idea, I like some of the ideas here about public participation and, and meetings and stuff.
Just like getting people to know that they can come and they can speak. Some people don't know that.
Right, right.
Um, we hold them however often. I didn't even put that in there. I don't know, there's just a lot people don't know, because they're busy.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Yeah, yes, definitely.
Well, this'll be your first, this'll be like your initial one, right?
Mm-hmm.
So for me, it would be interesting, and if you make an appointment, I can help you and give you the resources. It might be nice to explain to the community what the school board does, what their role is. We can talk, you know, and then you can select topics from there. And then each month, you can focus on a topic, like, what is public participation in a board meeting? What is this? What is that? And then you can also put in some highlights of the actions that you've taken, which you've done in addition to that, and now you've got, like, a full compliment to put in the Laker or the Sun. So if you call Mrs. Lee in my office and set an appointment, she'll schedule an hour, and you can come in, and we can just go online and look at different samples and give you some ideas.
Okay.
And then it'll be good for me, because there won't be, because when we go to do my newsletter that's coming out in July, we'll make sure that there's some things in common, but yet some things are different. And we can do that every month.
Okay.
So, that's fine.
All right.
That'll be fun. And then we'll give you to Amy West for formatting and pictures, and it'll be all set.
Perfect. Okay, keep it up.
Yeah, in the Sun, the last few times, there's been some letters from maybe the selectmen, I don't know, but I'll say from Pittsfield, it could've been anyone. Our school board in Chichester had a little, so maybe...
Oh, like, go back and look at those.
Go back, a couple of them. Give us at least a little bit of idea of what they're representing. Oh, okay, that makes sense. There's always one from, I think it's Chichester, Epsom State Representative. She always has a little blurb in. I never read it, because I'm, she doesn't represent me, but... So there's a few ideas from there. And I guess anything that the school board does, I mean, most of the time, we wanna do something that sounds like we're praising ourselves, but people wanna know what's going on. As soon as we hit budget season, they're gonna wanna know, like, if part of what our goals were is to have some type of a session to talk at the town hall, so it would be little notices about that. But again, for you getting the free stuff from the Sun, you ain't gonna, I don't imagine they're gonna want...
No, they're not gonna want this whole thing.
Yeah, a little blurb, so it doesn't have to be, we can't put everything in there.
Right.
So you take in some of the highlights. You know, what a highlight for me might be, the athletic thing, but the highlight for you might be the music club, so you put in...
Yeah.
Yeah, simple.
Yeah.
And the other thing I would suggest is, you just, your strategic plan is six months' worth of a newsletter, right there.
That's true.
We can sit there and go through that, and we have the, we have the electronic, we can sit there and go through it and say, let's pull this out and write, you can write a, you know, paragraph describing, and then just put it in there.
Okay.
And then, you know, you've got...
This made my life so much easier.
You've got material to work with, just in that.
Yeah.
And one thing, too, I don't know what it would cost to put this, not this big thing, but...
Less than the lockers.
But something that was broken down, a little bit more inside that.
Right, that's what's taken that, cut it up.
The cost of that thing is one cost, which probably isn't too lot, but to get the Sun to distribute it, it's probably about a hundred twenty-five, a hundred fifty bucks. Then you distribute a letter, or the towns, always, selectmen always put in a letter about the vote.
Yeah.
It used to be like seventy-five bucks, maybe to a hundred fifty, depending on what it is. That's inside every one of them.
It is.
So Mrs. Hannigan, just make an appointment, and let's, we'll just get it done. We'll probably get you six months done in an hour.
Yeah, and then this is, this is awesome. I don't, I think this might be a little more than we need. I mean, if you wanna do this, great, I love it, but, uh...
It's just 'cause I really need to go back to work, you guys. I need a job.
But even just a paragraph, every month, that would be cool, too, you know?
What would this cost? Fifty cents a piece, a buck to print each one of these?
I don't know, I haven't seen the...
Yeah, I know, but I mean, if you took, uh, three thousand of these, well, that would really jump up if it's a buck a piece. But they'd put in every paper that goes to a P.O. box, not a P.O. box, but an address, the Sun will put it in. And the fee was, I think, cheap, like, at the most, a hundred fifty, maybe.
Yeah, I think it was something like that, yeah.
I mean, that's great, and then somehow distribute, like, you said, maybe we cut that down to one page or some color. But color, it's colorful, tells you about, you know. So you got, we have plenty of time, and that'd be a great one for coming up in September, first, end of August, before the school starts. So, yeah. A lot of ideas, I don't think we have to make it two.
Going back to goals, the, one of our goals, we get, like, a public listening session, just this conversation made me think that it might be a good idea to structure those through a specific topic. So if we did, like, one in early September, like, uh, how was the transition back to school for people? And it, it just might get more people interested if they, rather than just an open listening, come say whatever, if we give them some kind of a, you know? Um, once budget season starts, it might be another really good time. What are your concerns? You know, what do you want the board to be thinking about as we go into budget season? I'm sure some people haven't, you know, a lot to say.
We could change the start time of school, that would definitely bring people on.
Well, everything you put in last fall about the school, the bus situation, that was, it was, I wasn't involved, so it was great to read every week. Okay, well, because everybody asks you what's going on.
It's great to be there, too. Yeah.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Yeah, it was awesome.
You know that?
It was awesome to be in the paper for people who weren't involved at the school.
Exhilarating it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anything. Now, well, uh...
Called everything in the book.
Well, Jocelyn...
I just remember putting the cones out, you know?
You do the school newsletter. I notice, like, Cole Brown always puts in an article every year about, okay, these are our new teachers this year. I mean, did we do something last year?
I do one at the end of the year about who's departing, and then one at the beginning of the year, and we put that in the Sun this year, too.
Great, good.
And the other, just food for thought, is when you have those, everything that we do should be focused around your strategic plan. So listening sessions with the community, why, specific topics are good, but tied back to the success of the strategic plan. This is really the board's opportunity to publicize that plan, to make that plan part of the school, to make that plan part of every discussion, to make that plan part of your budgeting. So I just, just remember that. You have your school board goals, but also remember that your plan is driving, should drive all your, most of your conversations. And then you'll be successful with it.
Great. Sure.
Okay. Ensure the safety and security of pupils in the school. Concrete ideas: Explore the possibility of an SRO on school grounds during school hours. Commission an engineering study to evaluate the building and entrance security procedures. Support teacher security training.
So we do have some stuff to talk about, and non-public about that. We also have, um, Ms. LaFon, the town administrator, sent me a message asking to see if we were available to, maybe have a joint meeting with the selectmen at some point in July. They're meeting on the...
Twenty-fifth?
Uh, the tenth and the tw- twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
They're always Tuesdays.
Right, they're Tuesdays, so tenth and twenty-fourth, so, um... I will not be available. If you guys are available and want to, to meet with them, have a little discussion about the school resource officer, I think that'd be a great thing. You can let me know, I'll let her know. Probably, we can just pick one of those dates, I'm guessing, and chill up.
Okay.
There's more, there's more of you than there are of them, so...
Twenty-fourth, because you're gonna be gone.
No, if you pick the seven, the twenty-fourth, I'll go with you.
Yeah. I'm good with the twenty-fourth.
I don't wanna force your pick.
All right, so, we'll be right back to her and see if we can get on their agenda as an appointment on the twenty-fourth. They meet at six o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unrelated to school safety, but related to meeting with the select board. If we are going to be investigating solar opportunities, that, you know...
It might be a good time to discuss it.
Yeah, at least. Plant the seed.
Yep.
Yep.
And I can speak, too. Not again that night. Okay.
So if we do that, we should probably post that as a meeting, just in case, as well. Twenty-fourth.
Should they post it, or us post it? We're going to them, right?
Well, they're, they've already posted, right?
All right.
Twenty-fourth, have a quorum, and...
Yep.
Talk about things.
Do you know what time their meetings are at, just so?
Yes, six.
Six.
And are they at the town hall?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Is that, is that the end?
That was, uh, we have two more goals.
Okay.
Prepare a responsible proposed budget for the 2019, 2020 year. Concrete ideas: Design a new budget summary that increases accountability and makes the material easier to understand. Focus on tax impact and explore strategies to avoid drastic changes. Look into reserve funds or surplus return.
So some of that we've been talking about. I understand you're interviewing for a business administrator position?
Monday.
Monday, maybe, uh, that's something you can ask as one of your questions about having, uh...
And actually, you'll be speaking to one or two of the candidates, depending on how that reaches, you know, firms out, on the eighteenth, during a joint board meeting.
Okay.
So...
So let's keep that in mind, yeah.
I have five pages of questions to go through tomorrow, that we've generated from across the districts. So if that one doesn't make my list tomorrow, please feel free to ask that question.
Okay.
You know, okay. Oh, all right, prepare the responsible budget. I would love to work with anybody about breaking that budget down, so that it's a lot easier, and where the costs really go. Like, we had the high school one whole page now, and people couldn't believe that we really, everything was always lumped in. So for me, I'd like to break out a few other sections, so we have this school, pre-K, SAU is a cost, the high schools a cost. So I think it would be great. And then, when, from the budget committee or from being in the public, we're looking at, uh, what, seventy-five pages? And there's, there's over, there's fifty items on every single page, I mean, it's like, you could break it out, we could come down to, like, almost a one sheet. Here's the total cost of this, here's the total cost of FICA, here's the total cost of this, but now it's on thirty-seven pages, so you don't know. A person in the public is trying to find out, well, what are we actually spending it on?
Maybe even like an overview page with, like, just the headings of each one, you know, like a...
We had that at one time, and it kind of got lost with the three towns, that we just took his education, his special education, his physical, his... It was all broken down. We had one page that told you what the budget, and then you, you also knew whether, what the totals were, whether you were up, whether you were down, whether you were on track.
So, so I think if we prepare stuff like that, and I think we should, I totally agree, we may want to at least keep our old format around, too, because I'm sure the budget committee will wanna look at it in that form as well.
Definitely. We were going to go, just like, once a month, it was gonna be the one page, and then every quarter, it was gonna be the regular, we've done for a hundred years.
Right.
You can make whatever supplemental material you want to explain the budget. The way the budget, and Marjorie's done a really good job of this, is she's got that budget down to detail, so it converts right to state reporting.
Yeah.
So you don't wanna manipulate your actual document too much more, because that shows high school special education, you know, it has, so the reporting's easier. But you can design any supplemental information that you'd like to. Now, one of the things that we'll be looking for and bringing to you as a joint board during budget development is your current financial software is going to stop, they're gonna stop tech support on that, which means that it is beyond its life.
Yeah.
Now, we don't know when, but we'll, we're going to start planning for a new system during budget season for the SAU, and I imagine that those new systems are going to have some easier reporting systems, because ADS has been around since, long before my time. So...
Took us about three years to get ADS implemented, and by the time we got it implemented in the three towns, it's, like you said, it's ready to be, something new's come along.
Right.
It's quicker, easier, faster.
And you're gonna see, I mean, just to tie in some other conversations, you're gonna see single, single sign-on platforms that have to, you know, your SIS, your student information system, your FAN, all that's gonna be tied together in the future, your next generation coming, so, you know, that may make things easier as things go on. Just to update you on that.
Last one. Become more familiar with policies and operate in a more policy-driven manner. Concrete ideas: Adopt a policy regarding the regular review and assessment of the implementation of the strategic plan. Continuously identify areas where policies are inadequate, missing, or unnecessary, and revise them. Delegate research, uh, delegate research and recommendation work to committees before being brought to the board. Enforce a waiting period for issues brought before the board before voting.
I don't know that we have any action items for that at this time, but I think going over the goals is probably just a good thing, just to, just to review them, keep them in mind, so, thank you, Perrin.
Yep.
We're gonna change, we're gonna, actually, what we're going to do is have a work session, Dave, Jocelyn, and I, in the summer. Take your spring update and get that all codified, because that takes so, it takes till the fall to get the spring update done, get that done, and bring it to you at once. And then, um, a little... done, and bring it to you at once. Um, and then, um, a little while ago, you had Barrett review your policies. We're gonna go through those by section, we're gonna present you by section, um, on the policies, once we get those updates done. Then our hope is to have that done by the middle of next year. Hopefully, we'll see how my year goes. Um, and then you just have the fall and spring updates to follow through on. So, that, that's what our plan was, we made up today. And they didn't like it when I said, we need to meet for like a couple hours. And I said, but you'll like it when, and don't tell us.
You're buying lunch, that's what you told me.
No, I didn't say that.
I heard it too. It was the weirdest thing.
Look at them.
All right, thanks for that. Okay, moving on to our, um, parking lot items. Uh, I can go through this quickly, because we've already touched upon a lot of the stuff. School board newsletter, solar panels, fresh picks, presentation, uh, the tractor, I think will still be referred to the Stiles Committee, so you guys must know what you've done with that. All the rest of these are ongoing, and I think Cor...
I think, well...
The student representative in August.
Security discussion, contact Homeland Security, that's been done.
Yep. It's been done.
They're, they're coming.
They're coming.
August to do a training.
Okay. Should we take that off our...
We can take contact, we can leave security discussion ongoing, but we can take off contact Homeland Security.
Like in school.
Okay, all right, Dave.
Uh, on this list, this, because, um, new, fresh picks, we actually, still, they are contracted to start, to start, keep doing lunch. Okay, so we're just having some other things to...
We're just having a presentation. We, we wanted to bring them in every once in a while, just have a conversation with them, see how it's going, see if there's any concerns on either side, um, moving forward. Because part of, partly, um, you know, their food choices and selections are based on our wellness policies and stuff like that, too. So, we can, you know, move things back and forth, uh, needed, if, you know, we're not happy with the way they're doing things, or if we loosen our guidelines at all, or the federal nutrition guidelines change, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, they have.
So, I don't know, I don't know if we have any pressing issues for them when they come talk to us, and if they, they've conducted a survey, um, and they're looking for the results of that, if nothing else. And if, you know, when they come, if people have concerns that they've heard about, or anything like that, we can, we can bring that forward to them. Anything else that we should be adding to this, or removing, or editing? No, I will look into our timeline.
Muffin.
So, looking through June, notify support staff, do later than July first, do assignments, I assume, or...
So, tentative assignments have been given, and then we'll finalize those by July one.
Okay. Uh, we're taking care of most of this stuff already. All coaching positions, exit reviews. Start to set, start to set bus routes. And review Gaviat bus stop.
That's old, amazing.
That's old, but it may still be something we want to look into, like, uh, so the, so yeah, Dave, from the Gaviat, were you here when the Gaviat bust up?
No.
Conversation's happened?
No, that's, that, that was my first year.
Okay, so...
So...
You probably remember that very good.
You know, on that was, one of it was because, um, the kids had to walk from Gaviat to, um, the next road down to get picked up.
Angela Drive.
Angela Drive. And then they, um, wanted my candidate to stop at Gaviat. Um, Debbie at the time said that there was a bad corner to stop at for a bus. You wouldn't be able to see the direction signs, whatever. So, I don't know if Dale has ever changed that route or not. So, we need to just check with Dale and see where, and if...
I got it.
So, that's it.
Yeah, there's some talk of, like, if we, we're, we're considering if, if we couldn't find a good way of stopping the bus on that corner, reversing the route, you know, so that would, maybe that was a way of picking them up.
Those towns, like, that, just fire a pot. Gaviat Drive is right off of...
But it's like a, it's like a ninety-degree...
No.
No. It's like a ninety-degree turn on Sherburn Hill.
Oh, Sherburn Hill area. I know that's where Angela Drive is. I guess I thought...
No, Angela Drive's on Ridge Road. So, it's...
Off a ridge and...
And then you take that sharp corner.
Sherburn Hill comes together.
And then turns into Sherburn Hill.
So, there's a number of kids that got in the Gaviat development, right, and they all have to go to like the end of the road there. They're probably dropped off there. And then they have to even go further over to Angela Drive, I think, to get picked up.
And there's no shoulder on that road.
Right, well, you know, holding the...
In the winter, it's just bad.
Yeah, so we're trying to look into a way of...
Well, I think the state law says you have to prove that route every year, so you use it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and that's, well, that's what's on our list here, is to go over the bus route, so...
Next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, next, maybe next meeting, or the meeting after, we can look at that. Well, next meeting's in June, so, yeah, we probably should.
And then come in at a wakentine.
I mean, I don't know if it's too early.
Right.
To set the bus routes yet, because we don't have a full...
Does that start to set bus routes?
Yeah. That's true, we don't even prove them yet. So, just talking to Scott, um, I will, I'm gonna text Scott tomorrow. We're gonna get in touch with Dale to figure out where, where that bus stop is going. And so, by next meeting, we'll have an answer.
Can, can I, personal bus stop issue, um, earlier on Range Road, Sherburn Hill Road, the corner at the bottom of Range Road, there are new neighbors who have, will be enrolling two students. Um, and currently, the Range Road kids are picked up on Bryant Ave. It's the same exact situation, so it's a sharp corner, but then students have to walk another tenth of a mile on, on the road to get to the bus stop, so...
We can try, probably not gonna get very far with that right now, because if they're enrolling two new students, they're not showing up on the routes yet.
Okay. I don't know if they, I had, wouldn't know, they just closed on their house a week ago. They're, they're, they haven't moved out of the town yet.
Yeah.
So, I know that they're coming, but I don't know if they're in yet.
So, Jocelyn, what's the timeline for new submit to Dale?
What do you mean?
Like, when you, student pickups and all that stuff, when do you do that?
I would have to ask Ms. Hilton. She handles all that.
You may not be able to follow this timeline, just...
No, you know what? The, the timeline says start to set up bus routes.
So, we're gonna start to...
Yeah, which is fine. And July is review bus routes, so I mean, like, we, we have time. It's just, you know, this is what we're counting for.
We're gonna start at least addressing the old Gaviat issue tomorrow, and then, if you remember the range. It's easier for me to do it with, with Shane, because he lives here and understands the streets.
Yep.
And then they ask me a question, I'm like, I'll have to get back, yeah. Although, after the fall, I do understand the streets pretty well.
Yes.
I drove them a lot.
All right, so, um, just to, just look forward in July. I know it's, it's not for a little while, but, uh, discuss school schedule, be great with the school board, so I think that's if we want to change the schedule at all. Uh, that's probably the time we need to start talking about it, is in July. Um, presentation discussion of staff and student and parent handbooks, Jocelyn, that's, you start working on that in July?
I'll bring it to you in July, yep.
It'll be done by nine, then. And then, continue with bus routes. So, that's just what you, what's on plan for you guys in July.
Perfect.
All right.
Okay.
Uh, future agenda items. So, our next meeting is on, uh, July, I'm sorry, June twenty-first, at four P M. Note the changed time. Um, we will try to get the food service presentation, if they can make it by then.
We'll let them know tomorrow.
Um, I don't know that we have necessarily anything else of high impact on the agenda. Did you note anything? Is that the regular stuff? That's the only thing I had written down for, I mean, policies, obviously.
Now, the rest are just action items that we need to take care of.
All right, okay. All right, if anyone has anything they want on the agenda, please let me know seven days before. Um, future meetings, we'll have to change this. Our next meeting is, there is a June eighteenth joint board meeting. That's at the north, here, right here?
That's here.
Okay.
It's already in here, Northwood School Library.
Uh, graduation is on June twenty-first, but before that, we'll have a meeting from four o'clock to six o'clock, four to whenever, hopefully being done by six-thirty. Um, then our next board meeting after that will be July twenty-fourth, July twenty-sixth.
But the potentially meeting with the select board, July twenty-fourth.
Right, we should probably add that on here. Well, yeah. July, July twenty-fourth, yeah, can we get that added on?
Yeah.
So, thanks. Next meeting. Uh, and, sorry.
Don't we have a Co-Brown meeting?
I know.
No?
But maybe.
Just had it.
Yeah.
Somebody's on that committee, right? I mean, we don't have a big...
Oh, there's an education committee, yeah.
Education committee, but doesn't...
Oh, and the other thing is that we're going to do, um, exit, non-public exit reviews on the nineteenth, at four o'clock, if people are available. Okay, is there any closing public comment? Mr. Howell.
Am I good, Gary? Is it on? Okay. Um, I just wanted to update the board with, um, union presidents for next year. Going forward, I didn't connect with, um, Jocelyn yet either, but you have co-presidents for next year. So, your executive board, Linda McDonald, who is currently a guidance counselor, is one of your co-presidents, and so isn't Sharon Plord, who is a special ed case manager. Um, Dana Kelly is the vice president of the union. Joanne Alberg is the secretary, and Kim Clemens is the treasurer, along with Jen Lenharth being the regional delegate. So, that is our executive board moving forward. Um, and hopefully, we'll continue the good things that are happening here at Northwood School, moving forward, um, with the board. So, um, another suggestion that I would make is, um, if you wouldn't mind coming up with maybe a second date, other than the nineteenth, for informal interviews. I know the, the week before, or that week of graduation is very busy, so I didn't know if you would, um, reconsider just having a second date available, maybe for next week as well. So...
Where are you and Larry tonight?
So, just, just for consideration, just have a couple of dates available. Thank you.
That's probably a good idea, but I don't know that we have any other dates available. We'll send it out. I can, I can send out an email if, uh, if we end up...
Just copy me, I, and I'll post it.
Yeah.
Big guys that are busy.
I can only get Monday and Tuesday.
Once I...
Yep, yep. We'll try, I'll see who can make it, if, and, uh, and I'll, I'll get in touch with the people who can't make it, and see if there's a common time, and then I'll email everybody and find out. And if we can't all be there, we can't all be there. It's okay, so, you know, do our best.
You make another date, make it like at the same time at four or something, so we kind of keep it in.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, any board members want to take this opportunity to address